I'd like to call the November 5, 2013 Planning Commission Public Hearing to order. Tonight, we are holding a public hearing of the Eugene Planning Commission to consider a package of zone changes and code amendments pertaining to commercial and industrial development. And before we begin, I'd like the planning commissioners to introduce themselves and then provide some time for staff to introduce the topic before we begin taking testimony. My name is Bill Randall. I am currently the Chair of the Eugene Planning Commission. And the other planning commissioners are, and we'll start with Commissioner Belcher.
John Belcher.
Jeff Mills.
Rick Duncan.
John Jaworski.
Vice Chair.
And John Borowski.
Thank you. Tonight, we also have members of city staff present. We have Terry Harding, Zach Galloway, and Carolyn Burke with the Planning Division, as well as Catherine Kappa with Building Permit Services. We'll begin with a brief presentation from staff and then open the public hearing. If anyone in the audience would like to speak, as I mentioned a minute ago, please fill out a request-to-speak form and bring that forward to staff. We will be limiting testimony to three minutes per person. And just as a reminder, Planning Commission will not make a final decision on these proposed amendments. We will, however, make a recommendation to City Council, who will hold their own public hearing before making that final decision. So with that, I'll turn it over to Terry and Zach for the staff presentation.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Terry Harding. I am a Senior Planner with the Eugene Planning Division. And I'm going to keep my comments pretty brief so we can get to the testimony. There are two types of proposals before you this evening. They are zone changes and code amendments. They each have their own approval criteria for your use informing your recommendations. The zone changes are shown on the maps in your packet. There is one parcel at Chad Drive and Old Coburg Road that we're proposing to change from R1 Low Density Residential to E1 Campus Employment. And there are many parcels in West Eugene proposed for rezoning. Some to C2 Community Commercial and some to E2, the new Mixed Use Employment Zone. And that map is in your packet as well. The zone change proposals generally follow the route of the West Eugene MX Extension and are based on study areas identified by the Envision Eugene Technical Resource Group. Comments regarding these zone changes to date have been mostly questions about existing uses and potential nonconformities. And in general, the property owners, businesses, and other stakeholders have been very supportive of the zone changes needed to implement the Envision Eugene Economic Opportunity Strategies. Zach's going to say a few words about the code amendments. And he has been leading that work with Catherine Kappa. And then we'll proceed on to the testimony from those who filled out a green sheet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. As you well know, after our previous work sessions, our proposed code amendments affect all three of the existing industrial zones and also include the creation of a new employment zone, E2, Mixed Use Employment, which, as Terry noted, affects areas in West Eugene, primarily around the Bertelson-West 11th intersection. The main intent is to diversify those uses, with the end goal being to increase employment in our industrial and now the future employment zones. I do want to hit on, or just kind of foreshadow perhaps, three themes that we've seen in the public testimony. A call to retain or address the initial proposal to remove a few of the permitted uses from those industrial zones, namely, the church synagogue and temple, and a longer use of ballet, dance studio, martial arts, and performing arts, I believe. The next--
Zach, if you could speak up a little bit more. We're having a little trouble hearing you up here.
Okay.
Thank you.
I mentioned that we've got three main themes that have developed in the public testimony. One is addressing potential nonconformities that would be created by removing uses from the industrial zones, namely, the church synagogue and temple, and the ballet studio, martial arts studios. The second item was the citing requirements for the proposed E2 zone, namely, the requirement that future zone changes to the E2 zone be adjacent to a current E2 zone. And the third question, really, was whether the proposal to allow 30,000 square feet of retail along the arterial roadways in the E2 zone was sufficient or the right number. I think it's important to note that we're here tonight to take public testimony and to hear what the public's comments are, public's opinion is, of these proposals. And with that in mind, this question's not resolved, and on all three of those, we're certainly hoping to making amendments or revisions.
That concludes staff presentation?
That does.
Okay. Well, with that, I will officially open the public hearing of the Eugene Planning Commission. Please give us your name and address before beginning your testimony. And as I mentioned, with the number of people wishing to speak tonight, we will be limiting testimony to three minutes. As a courtesy to all, we ask that you please cease your testimony when the buzzer goes off. We encourage you to submit any written testimony you have as well. And also, we would ask that you refrain, if it gets to that, hopefully it doesn't, from clapping, applauding, booing, or any other display like that. It just can tend to intimidate someone testifying. And we want to make sure that everybody has a comfortable opportunity to testify about whatever they want to testify about. So with that, Commissioner Jaworski has the list that we have so far, and we'll be calling your name. He'll also call the next person in line so that you can be ready and know that you're next.
Okay. With that, our first speaker is Bill Whalen, to be followed by Chuck Meeker.
Good evening. I'm Bill Whalen, 3118 Wolf Meadows, Eugene, 97408. I am here today on behalf of the Eugene Chamber of Commerce to express support for the employment industrial zone changes and code amendments, which are the subject of this evening's public hearing. The Eugene Chamber's Local Government Affairs Council and the Chamber Board have identified the implementation of Envision Eugene as a top priority. As you know, the Chamber has remained deeply committed to this issue since its inception in 2008 with the formation of Eugene Comprehensive Lands Assessment. The question of how we accommodate industrial and commercial land has always been an important one for the Chamber. The package before you tonight is one piece of that puzzle. While certainly, an expansion for industrial land will be important, likewise, efficiency strategies are a critical component to identifying and maintaining an adequate supply of economic lands. These efficiency strategies allow Eugene to accommodate more jobs inside the current urban growth boundary. And more importantly, they create needed flexibility within our industrial and commercial codes. We believe this increase in flexibility will not only allow people to use their land more efficiently, but they will also allow a diversity of businesses and development along key transit corridors and the core commercial areas. The package before you accomplishes three things. One, it creates a new E1 zone. We believe this will create more business development opportunities in campus industrial areas, which have traditionally been limited by that zone. Two, it applies an E2 and C2 zone. This allows for commercial industrial flexibility similar to the current Whittaker Special Area Zone. We have all seen and appreciated the positive economic outcomes that that zone in the Whittaker area over recent years. And we hope this additional flexibility can help the momentum continue to spread. We are very supportive of the initial application along the West 11th EMX route. Three, updates the I1 and I3, adding some flexibility while protecting them as industrial use. While flexibility in certain industrial areas, campus, and small parcels in denser populations or along transit corridors are a good thing. It is also very important that we protect the larger parcels active industrial land we have. We know that Eugene already has a shortage of industrial land in large parcels, so protecting our current supply is critical as we move forward. These amendments truly work to implement Envision Eugene and support the economic development goals set out in Envision Eugene. The Chamber is happy to support these amendments, and we urge you to move the package forward to the City Council for adoption. We also want to commend city staff for their work in engaging business and industry in this process. Business and property owners were very positive about this work and appreciate the city for reaching out to them and helping to improve the economic opportunities for their land and businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whalen. Chuck Meeker, to be followed by John Lawless.
I'm Chuck Meeker, and I own two pieces of property on River Avenue. One is 309 River Avenue, and the other one is 333. And when I see some of these changes in here, when we built that building for Clemens Marina, we designed it so it could be split up into six different rentals if it ever came to that. There are times when, if you have a building that's a single occupancy, and if that occupancy goes away, you have an empty building. So we put that with all the plumbing in the ground to be set up, to be able to be broken up into smaller rentals. And when I see some of the changes on here, that you can't rent it to a motorcycle repair service or sale, and other people that could not rent my two buildings out there, then that's a concern to me. And I look at all the empty buildings that we see sitting around Eugene today. You drive around, there's hundreds of them. And some of that is because they can't be rented for some applications. And I'd like you to reconsider the changes that you're going to make to people like me that have made a huge investment. And when you make those changes, then it limits what I can rent that to. And with the property taxes that I pay on those, I hate to be put in a position that I couldn't make those payments. So just keep that in mind when you're making this decision. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Meeker. John Lawless, followed by Kristen Taylor.
My name is John Lawless, 90 East 26th Avenue, Eugene, Oregon. I'm here tonight representing Arley &amp; Company, who owns property on West 11th in this neighborhood. They are in support of the general intent of the employment industrial zone changes and the amendments. A letter has been submitted that has some more detail in it, and I trust you'll look at that carefully, because it's kind of fine-grained, but short. But I'd like to summarize three of the major points in it. First, we'd like to ask that you consider expanding the E2 zoning opportunities to Arley's properties and to others that are like it out there on the west end of the transit corridor, to allow a wider range of employment and industrial uses instead of restricting them. The second item is that if that is not an option to include those properties, that we recommend you adopt citing criteria for the E2 zone that permit future rezoning of I2, excuse me, of I2 properties to E2, rather than limiting the rezoning to parcels that are specifically adjacent to existing E2 properties. It's a fine point, but it has a lot of impact. Third, Arley urges the Planning Commission to preserve the existing range of permitted and conditionally permitted uses in the I2 zone, as well as adopting the proposed permitted uses to add to the I2 zone. So expanding that and allowing the I2 to have continued uses that exist right now, as well as the proposed I2 changes that go into it. I trust you'll consider these details carefully. It's very important that available properties that fit the concept and context and intent of this expanded area connected to transit really be maximized and made whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristen Taylor, followed by Ulery Smith.
Good evening. My name is Kristen Taylor, and I reside at 1648 East 23rd Avenue, Eugene. I'm here on behalf of Guard Publishing, the owner of 60 acres of existing campus industrial I1 property located along Chad Drive. I've also submitted a letter for the record on behalf of Guard Publishing with more detail. Guard Publishing supports the general intent of the proposed employment and industrial zone changes and code amendments to add more jobs within the existing urban growth boundary, to proactively respond to the lessons learned from the past code restrictions that have directly resulted in the lack of development opportunities in this area, to achieve the purpose of the proposed E1 zone and better meet the goals of allowing more flexibility in this zone. Guard Publishing encourages the Planning Commission to support the following changes to the proposed code amendments. Preserve the existing I1 permitted and conditionally permitted uses in the new E1 zone, as well as adopt the proposed added permitted uses in the E1 zone. Permit hotels with perhaps a special use limitation allowing maximum area for this particular use in the development area, or per development site, excuse me. Currently, the existing hotel development in the areas located in Springfield and supportive commercial goods and services are located a distance from Chad Drive area, resulting in employees and users of this campus employment area and future VA clinic to drive to these destinations. The integration and allowance of a diverse mix of uses within the E1 zone to support the large number of employees per acre anticipated for this area is an important part of the success of the campus employment zone. Remove the number four special use limitation criterion on the publishing services use, because the Guard Publishing service use would no longer be allowed then in this area, because it limits it to 20 percent. And Guard Publishing currently occupies the entire site of the registered guard as an industrial use that's currently allowed. Significantly revise or entirely remove the special use limitation criterion three. The area restrictions in this code section result in reducing development opportunities of viable industrial uses in the Chad Drive area due to the restrictive and seemingly arbitrary 30 percent maximum for supportive accessory uses to the primary use. Like I said, there's more details in the letter. The substantial updates of the Eugene Code since 2002 and the current proposed code amendments incorporate comprehensive development standards that directly address the general design and character of proposed developments.
Oh, I didn't hear the timer go off. Oh.
Is it time?
I'm sorry. Yeah, so if you could kind of wrap up.
Okay, I will. So basically, it addresses it, and we'd like to recommend that the site review overlay be removed from these properties in this area. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. So we don't have sound on the timer? Oh, okay. Ullery Smith.
I'll give you a signal.
Followed by Cliff Harold.
My name is Ullery Smith. I reside at 56 Marion Lane, Eugene. I am speaking on behalf of Upstart Crow Studios at 855 West 1st Avenue in Eugene. Our concern is the language change for the zoning 1-2, which we are a part of. We are a nonprofit youth performing arts company in the Whittaker neighborhood. We understand that we are grandfathered in, because I spoke with Terry, and she explained all of that because of our lease, but that once our lease was up, that that change might affect what happens to us as a company. So currently, we have over 200 children in that building that come every week. And most of these kids are at-risk kids or foster kids and the everyday kid. So we feel like this impacts these children as well. We are in a single-family dwelling area, so I think also that would impact the neighborhood. We have been welcomed by the Whittaker neighborhood. We've been there for almost seven, seven or eight years. Our lease will put us there for 10 years. Prior to that, it was the Eugene School of Ballet. So that has been a landmark area of performing arts for the community for quite some time. We have partnered with the other area businesses, Hop Valley for One, Nkasi, Oakshire, which also are in the zone 1-2. They are very supportive of what we do and have been very good business partners to the community through the performing arts for these children. So it is our concern that this change will eliminate the theater, the community theater that we have based there, and the performing arts education that these children receive by placing this as something that they can no longer use in this building. If that zone change also happens to create a commercial use, then our rent goes through the roof come the time for our lease to come back up again. And as a nonprofit, we just can't bear that burden either. So we hope that the council will look that over. And we also submitted a letter to Terry that she has on file as to our concerns. We have people here in the audience, too, that have children in this community that are involved in this program and very much are concerned about that particular problem. We are the only small place on the corner lot that this affects, so I think that that's also a consideration that we're concerned about. The rest of the area places, such as Bounce Gymnastics and Balloway Northwest, are zoned a little bit differently. And so they are permitted to be there, whereas it would completely shut us down to have that zone change there. So that is our hope, that you will make that consideration. And Terry has that information on file, too, as well. So we thank you.
Thank you. Cliff Howard, followed by Kevin Reed.
Thank you. Someone's glasses are up here. Cliff Harold, President of the Board of Directors, Eugene Christian School at 2895 Chad Drive. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Board of Directors of Eugene Christian School to ask the Commission to reconsider the language that excludes churches in the proposed E1 zone. Eugene Christian School operates under a conditional use permit under church use in the Chad Drive area for about two years now. We feel we've been a welcome neighbor and a good fit for that area. And we feel that, in general, church use is a welcome neighbor to any area in the city, any of the zones. So this proposed language could potentially impact ECS in the future for expansion and et cetera. So we'd like to ask the Commission to reconsider just that language that excludes churches in the E1 zone. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Reed, followed by Mark.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Reed. I live at 3117 Riverbend Avenue. And I'm a commercial real estate broker here in town. And I just wanted to reach out and say thank you to both Terry and to Zach, because I know that their group has worked very, very hard at bringing this new zone change to our community, which I know I speak on behalf of many of the commercial real estate brokers here in town, was that it's a blessing in disguise for all of us. That having this mixed-use opportunity is going to allow us an opportunity to bring some quality businesses to this town and create some really, really good jobs. And I really appreciate your willingness to want to listen to the industry as a whole and your willingness to want to help us remedy a problem that's been a major problem in the committee for a long time, and that's having flexible development land available to us. So again, thank you so very much for your contribution.
Thank you. Mike Rimmer, followed by Bill Close.
My name is Mike Rimmer. I live at 2960 Sarah Lane in Eugene. And I'm a layman representing the Church of the Nazarene here in Eugene. And Bill's passing out a packet that describes our project, what we are working on, and this will be a rendering of what it'll look like when it's complete. We have purchased property in the Cone-Green Hill Technology Park out on West 11th. We started the project in 2007. We purchased the property, got approved usage, and began fundraising in '08. We currently have invested $2.7 million into the project. And that includes the land, fees, permits. And we also have an approved conditional use permit. We're waiting for our present facility to sell before we can begin. And it would speed that up if we could talk the city into changing the zoning there to R3 from R2. That would be helpful. I want to tell you a little bit about our building, and then Bill Close will speak to the technical parts of it. But it is a multipurpose facility. It will seat 900 people for a Sunday service, approximately 500 for banquets and seminars and meetings. It's a full-size gymnasium, full-size for basketball and for volleyball, designed for youth and adult leagues, plus a number of classrooms and other meeting rooms that'll be available. The plan is, and always has been, to make this available to the community, which is something we are already doing, albeit in a much smaller way in our present facility. You have a list, you have a letter from us that spells this out, what we're using our facility for now. The parking lot, which does not show in this, but it does show in the packet that Bill passed out, is right where possibly LTD would use, they have discussed this with us, of using that parking lot as a park-and-ride for EMX and their West Eugene cutoff point. And so if we go in there, it's quite likely that they would be using that. Our concerns are the wording of the zoning change and how it might affect what we want to do. Our plan is also for three phases. Even if you were to allow Phase 1, which we have the permit ready to go, we're concerned about Phase 2 and Phase 3, what would happen there. We have also envisioned purchasing other properties around us, if available.
And I guess I'm being told you're at your time, so if you could--
I'm done.
--wrap up the thought.
Yep. We're envisioning purchasing other property if it's available at the time, so we could put in ball fields, which would benefit the community as well. And we just trust that you'll carefully consider what we're planning to do for the city, as well as ourselves in West Eugene.
Thank you. Bill Close, followed by Justin Schmick.
Bill Close, 375 West 4th Street, Suite 204 in Eugene. Folks, you have a two-and-a-half-page letter from me in your packet at page 45, the most startling aspect of which probably is that it's only two and a half pages. I want to thank the city staff for the open ears that they've had for my clients, meetings with them in the last couple of weeks on this issue. We get it, that staff is sensitive to the problem. When the church contacted me a couple of weeks ago and said, "Look what's happening. What does this mean for us?" I said, when I got a grip on the facts, "It means you're probably not going to be able to build your church, period." And that's because, even though they got $2.5 million sunk into this, they don't have any building permits. They haven't started construction. And what that means is, if the code changes and the use drops out, I don't think they're a nonconforming use. I think they're not allowed. To be a nonconforming use, you've got to be started. And they've got a lot of money sunk, but they're not started. So a lot of folks were talking about nonconforming uses, or grandfathering uses, tonight. And that's kind of a positive gloss on the word "nonconforming use." And "nonconforming use" is really kind of a neutral word for "snuff it out and make it conforming." It all boils down to the code 9.1200, which says, "Nonconforming uses are, quote, detrimental to the orderly development and general welfare of citizens and property." And it is, the code intends its orderly termination. So even for existing churches, up and running, if you drop this use out of the code, the code intends to make the church go away in the long run, which means they can continue operating, they can expand. In the case of this church, because it hasn't started, it may never get started. My clients will be in the business of selling real property instead of developing a church. In my letter, I, I mean, easiest thing to do is to hold status quo. Failing that, I have some suggested language in the code that you can adopt to make this use allowed as a pre-existing use. And that's way better than being a nonconforming use. And staff can explain to you why that's so. The most startling fact I learned about this situation is that churches in Eugene today have a couple qualities. It's very hard to locate one. The zoning code is very stingy. And that's why you see a couple of churches moving into the I1 zone. The second thing is that churches today in Eugene really function like community centers. They're not like my church that I grew up in, where services were conducted on Sunday in a foreign dead language, and then the doors closed for a week. They really function as community centers and provide services to the larger community. My clients documented that for you in this materials. And I think that's true for most churches in Eugene, as reflected in the supporting letter from the pastor that follows mine. So, community organizations, I'm getting--
We're at lunch.
Thank you very much. Think of them as community centers, rather than churches, if that's helpful. Status quo would be good. Thank you.
Thank you. Justin Schmick, followed by Dennis Cassidy.
I'm Justin Schmick, 1600 Oak Street. I'm a commercial broker and have been working with businesses over the last decade here locally. The I1 zoning currently does not allow food and beverage manufacturing and currently does not allow apparel manufacturing. With the change to the E1, I would request that those uses be permitted. Those are clean uses that fit into the neighborhood and generally attractive and create job growth and seem to be a good idea. And in reviewing the zone change for the E2, some of the I2 properties are included in that. Wanted to make sure that the E2 doesn't have any language to prevent food and beverage industry, and also want to make sure-- industry and also want to make sure there's no height limitation added to the E2 language. Some of the other mixed-use zonings in town have height limits that prevent job growth and just want to make sure we're not, where I2 doesn't have a height limit, then just want to make sure the E2 doesn't include that language.
Thank you.
Dennis Cassidy followed by Steve Reinmuth.
My name is Dennis Cassidy, Post Office Box 5028 Eugene, 97405. I've got property with four tenants on Stewart Road and I'm just concerned about you removing in the I2 zoning, the handcraft industries and small-scale manufacturing. I'd like to see that, the possibility of having those remain for future. The other thing I'm concerned about is residential standards in I2 zoning. As proposed, a residential unit must be sited, generally sited behind the primary structure in I2 zoning. And I'm curious or wondering if the building, the existing I2 building is back to the back property line. I'd like to see some flexibility to be able to have a residential caretaker unit adjoining or built next to as opposed to necess, behind the primary structure. I've had the property for 35 years. There's been numerous cases in the past of vandalism or breaking and entering and I'm considering having an onsite caretaker there and I'd just like the opportunity, should I decide to, to put a residential unit, a single unit beside the property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steve Reinmuth followed by Robin Irish.
My name is Steve Reinmuth and my wife, Zohann, and I own industrial property and run a business at 3295 Meadow Lane. We've been there for 12 years and at the time we sited there, it was a perfect fit for the zoning, for our business. What we do is we make art out of bronze. We cast metals into artistic forms for people, all over the world actually. And a year ago, we had nine employees. Right now, we have two and we're victims of this difficult economy. What I'm hoping for is a lot of flexibility. There's a lot of small businesses like ours that I know of that aren't as lucky as we are and that are gone right now because they just didn't have the flexibility and the opportunities to keep going. And right now in this economy, I can tell you that sometimes a little bit of opportunity makes all the difference in the world between surviving and going under. I can say it's one of the hardest things I've ever had to do to fire seven employees. It affected me deeply, but it affects them even more and most of them are still unemployed right now. So, because we don't use most of the space that we have available, I have to rent it. It's absolutely critical to my survival as a business in order to keep doing what I'm doing. I can't just move. There's too many site-specific processes that I've developed in that building. I can't just start over again. It's now or never for me. And so, I have been approached by a number of different kinds of operations, small businesses that either they do handcrafts or they do some retail or they have offices or I was even approached by a small dance studio and a dojo, karate studio. I would love to be able to have the maximum amount of flexibility to be able to rent this space for the highest dollar possible so that I could actually continue to operate where I am. To me, that's a vital component for my future existence. And I don't know, even now after reading the letter and making the phone call and talking, I'm still gaining information about all this, but how it affects me, I would really appreciate the maximum flexibility with the use of my property. My hope is, and my dream is really, to just do what I do. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Robin Irish.
Robin Irish, 3295 Cross Street, actually right around the corner from Reinmuth Bronze. And I'm here tonight also regarding the language for Zone 2 changes. I think that aside from having a small-scale manufacturing business and aside from living in a part of Eugene where there are numerous for lease, for sale, that seem to be increasing every week, unlike the new development areas of the E2s or wherever are looking to develop, I think it's really important not to forget what's already here. And if you limit the possibilities for those areas where historically the arts, the nonprofits have needed to be in the industrial areas in order to survive, and if you're limiting the scale of operations there, then you're actually decreasing economic opportunity. And so, I'm here to say that the language from what I have read thus far for the Zone 2 changes are going to limit economic opportunity in the West Eugene area that has already been there for a lot of years, that is not there to be developed. And to really think about that and consider that because it will affect, it will affect those of us who are small businesses, those of us who are in the arts, those of us who have buildings that are open, that we want to be able to now use that building for the arts and we won't be able to do that any longer. And that will affect the economic opportunities in Eugene. Thank you.
Thank you. So, we don't have any more slips of people wishing to testify. And so, with that, oh, oh, one more. Okay, come on up.
My name is Jeff Dahl, 1250 Ocean Street, Eugene, Oregon. And I started a machine shop 22 years ago in Eugene and I started it illegally in my house in Santa Clara, like a lot of cottage industries do, don't really ask. They just want to start a business because they're excited about trying to, you know, better themselves and their family. And then I moved to illegally zone on 4065 West 11th. That would fall under the, I believe that would fall under the E2 zoning, George Wingard's property that has, you know, there's a lot of units there that are used for various businesses, for anything from, you know, just every cornucopia of businesses. I was there for a couple of years. Then I moved out to three acres out in Crow, again illegally because, I mean, it was my personal residence and I didn't have any employees out there, but I, as far as technically being legal, I was in the country and if noise from any machines I had scared a neighbor's horse, of course, we all know that could, you know, make a change. So, 10 years ago, I bought my I2 zone property, 1250 Ocean, and I breathed a huge sigh of relief that finally I could be in a place where nobody could say, "You can't run your machine shop there," you know, because it's like it's owned I2. I could technically have three shifts a day, seven days a week, I believe. And so, so for me, when I saw the language that talked about light manufacturing, I was hoping to get some clarification on what that meant because that's kind of a vague general term and most people would buy I2 property with the hopes of doing industrial work there. On Down Ocean Street, every business on my street manufactures something, from forklift repair to Larry's Sheep Metal, to driveline service, to, every business down the road is doing some sort of, you know, this type of work. So, I didn't know if there's any question and answer time at all tonight, but I was hoping to get some clarification for what that meant specifically of when you say light manufacturing because, because I currently own a medium industrial zone property, not a light industrial, but medium. So, and I have three-phase power. So, I, anyways, I just was wanting some clarification on that if that was a possibility. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm getting a signal from staff that you're going to talk with him about that, clarify that. Anyone else wishing to testify that, oh, and if you, Mr. Dahl, if you could also fill out a green slip for us and get that to staff. Okay. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and we will be deliberating on this issue on Monday, November 18th at 11:30 in the Slot Room in City Hall. And what I would like to do now is open it up for commissioners who may have questions of staff, things that we would like to kind of get out on the table before our deliberations so that staff can have an opportunity to get those to us. And what I'd like to do is maybe just start at one end of the row and work our way down. So, I'll start if it's okay with Commissioner Belcher.
Yes. I really only have one question. Could you give us an idea of the numbers and types of businesses that will either be non-conforming or pre-existing if the proposed changes go through? I don't expect that tonight, obviously, but if you could do a little survey, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. I'll just say something very brief, which is that it was a main goal not to create non-conformities, so.
Well, we've heard otherwise.
Understood.
Commissioner Mills.
Yeah, I have one, I apologize for it's a fairly far-reaching question, but we've heard a lot of talk about changes and to me, they tend to reflect a change in the marketplace based on what we're doing. And I'd like to ask the staff where they can to tell me what the changes are going to do with the available land inventories. In other words, as we move, we go in and we change something, I'm thinking we've had a lot of discussion around churches and nonprofits. And where you can, I'd like to see what we're doing to the inventories with the changes we're making because ultimately that's what's going to affect the market. If I could understand that better, that'd be helpful.
Thank you. Commissioner Duncan.
A couple of questions. There was an individual that spoke about a use in the Whittaker area and if I'm not, I guess I'd like some input on how the Whittaker Special Use District is affected by this potential changes in some of the uses.
It's not. The one upstart Crow is located in the I2 Zone and across the street, there is mixed-use Whittaker zoning.
So, they're not in the Whittaker Special Use District?
No, they're in I2.
And then there's been a few comments about handcraft-type businesses and I would assume that those are considered manufacturing. And I think just for. That's correct. I think it would be good just for record that we get something in there that talks about that because there seems to be some misunderstanding about manufacturing and what that is. And another person talked about size and I know that size doesn't come into play, but again, I think that clarity would be nice in the record. And then the other one had to do with, and I think I'm somewhat responsible for the idea of allowing sort of a single-family use in the zone or a care, you know, caretaker's facility. And I'd like to get an idea if there's a way that we can deal with what was asked and that is if you have a pre-existing building on the site where you couldn't fit it in, is there flexibility with that? And I think if I remember the way I've read this, it allows for some along the side, but it would be nice to maybe deal with pre-existing buildings as of the date of the ordinance if we can add something that would allow that flexibility. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. And I'm going to go down to the other end with Commissioner Borowski and then move this way.
Well, for me, I guess the questions that I've gotten out of the public testimony and the testimony that's been submitted, obviously, we've received a lot of correspondence regarding churches and we had in both zones, in the Chad Drive area and also in the, in the West Eugene area. So, I think I'll just need to kind of know more about, one, why we're feeling that they'll be excluded or not permitted, I guess, and, you know, the rationale behind that and the possibility of what that impacts would be if they were a permitted thing. The, uh, things that Ms. Taylor brought up regarding the Guard Publishing properties and hotel uses and the ancillary uses that would come if you had a hotel. Some sort of, you know, information on that would be, would be, would be good to know about. I'll also read into her letter more of the details that she had. She had actually, it seemed like sections that needed, that they would like us to look at at least. I wasn't sure about the Clemens Marina River Avenue. Is that, isn't River Avenue over more by Beltline and not, so I was confused about that, that one, whether that is in this.
It's in the I2 Zone.
It's in the I2, but it's not in one that would be changed?
Right. That's some of the code amendments before you do affect allowable uses in the I2 Zone.
Okay. So, I2 Zone citywide, there's scheduled changes for, okay. And then the, I guess the last thing, and it was brought up again at one of our other meetings, is the non-contiguous, the Arley property and non-contiguous being able to put in, the pros and cons of that from the staff perspective, you know, as far as do we want to create a patchwork? And then the last thing on my list, and you've, I brought it up at our last work session, is I'm concerned about the R1 on Stewart Road as far as how that would abut. You know, there's different types of setbacks and things like that that are, if you're abutting in R1 Zone, that if we leave that as R1, with, which in my view, I don't know if that is the proper zoning for those parcels going forward. So, those are my concerns.
Thank you. Commissioner Jaworski.
Well, quite a few things covered. I guess what I would like is as we deliberate in the future, if we're looking at either A, non-conforming or permitted, non-permitted uses, whatever, what options are there because possibly not everything can be changed or addressed? What options are there so that a non-conforming use won't be an illegal non-conforming use potentially suggested by Attorney Close and what other things might there also be that could correct this? Thank you.
And I think my questions are similar to that line of discussion. Couple of things. One is maybe the, whether or not these changes would create a non-conforming use out of a conditional use that's already been approved. And then also if a conditional use has already been approved in any of these zones, I'm assuming based on what we've talked about that they would be able to continue, but if there might be some way to allow an expansion of that, either through a major modification to a conditional use permit or something where someone's already done that, gone through the process for a conditional use permit, which is pretty involved, I know, and invested a fair amount of money in their property, if there might be some way to allow that expansion to occur, I think that would be something I'd like us to look at. And those were my questions and I, no, Commissioner Mills asked for one more.
One more, yeah. And this is, this is, I think, a fairly simple one for staff. It has to do with Ms., excuse me, thank you, Ms. Taylor's presentation on behalf of Guard Publishing and the statement that their current use will not be around. Publishing and the statement that their current use will not be allowed outright. And I just, I guess I'd ask that we, if you could give a point-by-point, not now, but when we get ready to deliberate on, on the concerns that she's raised, so we know, we know where you think we are. Thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners that have come up since we've done that? Okay.
I'd like to just provide a couple of comments about next steps. So we've held the hearing and received a lot of testimony. One of the things that's staff's job now is to respond to that testimony and advise you for your deliberations. So we do have deliberations scheduled on November 18th, and we'll prepare a memo for you that responds to the questions that you've just asked and responds to the pieces of testimony that have come in. I also want to say that we feel like the issues that have been brought up, there are fixes for them, and we'll outline those as options, as suggested by Commissioner Jaworski in our materials to you. There are a couple of policy choices or options, directions you could take with regards to how you treat a nonconforming use, whether you add a line item to the code, and we'll do our best to explain those to you in detail about how they would function and be administered, so that those uses that are already approved can occur, and that ones that are existing do not become nonconformities. And I agree, we have heard a lot of testimony, and we want to fix that.
Okay. Thank you. Well, seeing no other comments, I adjourn, close the public hearing. Thank you. Thank you all for coming.